And we're moving along to item number 17, the presentation on Affordable Housing Omnibus, Affordable Housing Deep Dive. And I'll just give a little introduction. I appreciate the clerk on submitting the memo for me. I just want to make sure that they can get that presentation pulled up. So I'll start with just a little bit more background information to say that this is a cumulative look at the work from the last year of the council and presentations that we received from residents in the community, experts, and advocates all throughout fall of 2022 through the spring of 2023. Our presenters today are our interns, who were brought in under Mayor O'Neill. And I know that this was meant to be a fall presentation of 2023, and it's come up in January. We're finally here. But Bryce McKeel is a fourth-generation Dermite and homeowner, raising two fifth-generation Dermite girls with his wife, Rosemary. He comes from a real estate family, and his parents have owned and operated Apple Realty on Guess Road for nearly 25 years. And Joe Wilson is a master's student in the Department of City and Regional Planning at UNC Chapel Hill, specializing in housing and community development. And I'm going to turn it over to you two gentlemen to bring us through the omnibus.
All right. Thank you very much. So, yes, we are the mayoral interns. I'm Bryce McKeel, and this is Joe Wilson. So in 2022, the Durham City Council began deep research into the city's housing issues. The council heard 11 presentations from local experts and a number of city departments and local organizations. Former Mayor O'Neill asked us to compile the information from those presentations and compile it into one easily accessible place. So we have chosen to make an omnibus available of all of the relevant information from those presentations. And this will be going on the city's website so that it is available to the public online. So in the 20 minutes we have today, today's presentation is not a replacement for those 11 presentations, but it should serve as a helpful recap of that information. So we've divided those presentations into five broad categories that we're going to go over today: income and affordability, private development, subsidized and public housing, evictions, and finally homelessness. So with that, take it away, Joe.
All right. So just to bear in mind that all of this is taking place amid rapid population growth, especially among wealthier residents moving into Durham. This has put a lot of upward pressure on rent and home prices, and it's really one of the driving factors behind the affordability crisis that we see. But it's also a product of a long history of housing conditions and policies. We unfortunately don't really have time to get into those at this presentation, but they're important to bear in mind as we consider the present situation. There are different approaches toward remedying the housing situation. Some are based on private practices, others on more public intervention. But what we're going to see across all presentations is that no one solution exists, no silver bullet to solve all of these issues. But with that in mind, we're going to move on to the first major topic, which is housing affordability. So to paraphrase a comment from Councilmember Middleton during the presentations, there can't really be a conversation about housing affordability without it also being about income. There are two sides to affordability. One is how much housing costs. The other is how much households can pay. So we often hear that households shouldn't spend more than 30% of their income on housing. Reginald Johnson, for the Community Development Presentation, said that for individuals, that's financial advice, but for a city, it becomes a question of how we can actually make that viable for everyone, how we can have safe and decent housing available at that 30% income level, even for those with lower incomes. So for the purposes of programs using money from HUD, income levels are defined in relation to the area median income. There's a little bit of nuance to that, but generally, you can see the income levels here for a given household size. So we just have a couple of graphs showing trends in income and rent. The first one comes from the DataWorks presentation, and it shows a stratification of income. You see higher-income jobs becoming even more higher income and lower-income jobs becoming even more lower income in relation to that median rent figure in the middle. The second one is from the Triangle Apartment Association. This shows rent from 2017 to mid-2023. As you can see, there's a very large spike during 2021 and the first half of 2022, which leveled off during the second half of 2022, but is still elevated well above where it was a few years ago. And then this is a graph from that Community Development Presentation, showing how renting versus ownership is distributed at different income levels. A big takeaway here is that homeownership doesn't really become viable until you get up close to that area median income level. As Reginald Johnson pointed out, that can make it really hard to save wealth at the lower income levels. For a lot of people, home equity is the main form of savings, and that can't really happen when you can't afford a down payment in the first place. So for what the city can actually do regarding this situation, North Carolina is a Dillan's Rule state. That means that cities only have certain powers allocated them by the state. So Durham cannot require the inclusion of affordable housing in developments. But the city does have a special charter authority, which let's say incentivize housing through things like density bonuses or other incentives of value, which the attorney's office and the planning department have been looking into.
All right. So briefly on private development, we have a chart here. Credit to Sarah Young for this infographic. And this chart describes the development process. So development begins by asking whether something is allowed by the zoning. So, for example, if I wanted to build a workforce housing option, like a duplex, all I have to do is check the zoning. And if it's residential, compact, urban, or suburban multifamily, it's allowed by right, and I can build it without special permission. If the current zoning does not permit the proposed development, then the owner or developer has to seek rezoning through council. So this requires a site plan, which can be expensive. And together with application fees, Realtor fees, land costs, developer can easily spend $65,000 or more before getting approval to break ground. Someone looking to build a home might be prepared to spend that kind of money, but if rezoning is at the discretion of the planning department, then this investment becomes a bit of a gamble. So risking $65,000 only to be told no is not a risk that smaller developers are willing to make. Most of the local developers are going to stick to buy-right development options, which often don't include small multifamily housing. So if we're going to encourage workforce housing built by local developers, it's recommended by the Triangle Apartment Association and the Durham Regional Association Realtors that affordable options be made available by right. So at the time of writing, there is a new development ordinance being written that could allow for such housing. This is unfortunately outside the scope of this project, but we do have high hopes for that undertaking. So development has been occurring at a rapid rate over the past couple of years. But so far, for reasons that are entirely clear, density bonuses and other incentives haven't been very effective at encouraging smaller local developers. Most of that development has been by large corporate, out-of-state developers. But a strong pipeline of apartment deliveries has more or less caught up with population growth. And as we saw from that earlier chart, rents increases have seemed to level off. This is good news, that it has seemed to hit an equilibrium. But of course, the bad news is that they've stabilized above area median income affordability. I don't have a whole lot of time to talk much about environmental concerns, so for more information on that particular topic, I would point curious listeners to the Lake Creek Water Quality Presentation. So finally, for this section, I'm going to get into a few recommendations. Most of these came from the Triangle Apartment Association and from the experts chosen by the Durham Regional Association of Realtors. The first recommendation was the most common one: Bring back the Housing Roundtables. These discussions brought together relevant stakeholders from several different backgrounds to look at housing situation from all angles. Another recommendation from the Apartment Association was to invest in Affordable Housing Preservation Fund, to buy and finance affordable housing. The Durham Affordable Housing Loan Fund already exists to do this, but funds are currently exhausted. I believe they exhausted in 2022. Another suggestion was to streamline development process for ADUs, and when appropriate, loosening some land use restrictions that could allow for more land where multiplex units can be built by right. And finally, there was about $2 million from the 2019 Affordable Housing Bond for ADUs that went unused. There was talk of reallocating that money. I don't know what happened to it, but that could be used to help incentivize ADUs that promise more affordable rents.
All right. So from the sort of private development picture, we're going to look now at subsidized and public housing. This is mainly through the Durham Housing Authority, which gets funding from HUD. And so it has to use those HUD income criteria, which can be kind of strict. So at the time of the DHA presentation, about 9,000 people were using at least one of their services, and there were thousands more on waiting lists. These residents had an average income of $11,000 a year, paid an average of $300 a month in rent. About a quarter of them were employed, and around 40% were under 18, 15% seniors, and among overall, about 40% had a disabling condition. So the first DHA program that we're going to look at is Section 8, the Housing Choice Voucher Program. This works by giving residents vouchers to find apartments in the private market. The tenant pays 30% of their income as rent, and then the DHA pays the remainder. This is the Housing Authority's largest program, but it does face some challenges. One of them is that a lot of landlords don't accept tenants who use Section 8 vouchers, which can make it hard for voucher holders to find an apartment. Another thing is that the Housing Authority limits what is considered reasonable rent. That's because they have to pay a lot of that rent. They have the authority to raise that number, which would open up more apartments for voucher holders. But the flip side is that it would reduce the number of vouchers that they could afford to provide. And they'd really like to be able to provide as many vouchers as they can, because there's a huge demand. They cap the waitlist and only open it up periodically, but it's estimated that around 10,000 households are looking for Section 8 vouchers. The other major program is public housing, which has a pretty bad reputation in the United States. To paraphrase, in exchange during the DHA presentation, public housing is essentially a failed model in the United States because of chronic underfunding by Congress. Still, a lot of people in Durham use public housing and want to use it. The Housing Authority has around 1,700 units, almost all of which are occupied, and over 5,000 people on waiting lists. But in 2018, it was designated a troubled agency because of poor building quality. And the repairs that it needs are a lot more expensive than the grant that HUD gave them. Mr. Scott estimated that the repairs would cost $50 million over five years, and the grant was only for $15 million. It's one of those things that compounds over time. When repairs have to be deferred, they end up getting more and more expensive. And as we mentioned, it's a national issue. Mr. Scott cited a HUD statement that nationwide HUD had underfunded public housing by $76 billion over its history. One strategy that DHA is following moving forward is utilizing more mixed-income housing. You can see this in the plans for the DDNP development downtown. So on to some recommendations. The first one is finding ways to get more landlords to accept those Section 8 vouchers, whether that's through incentives or as a contingency for city funding. There's also a need for partners who can provide things like childcare and job readiness training for people using DHA services. And a couple of the presentations noted that staffing shortages have caused administrative difficulties. The Association of Realtors suggested partnering with local colleges to build a pipeline for city jobs, administrative jobs. And the Association of Realtors and DHA had a couple of suggestions as far as reforming down payment assistance and utilizing Section 8 vouchers for mortgage assistance instead of just rent.
Okay. Moving on to evictions. Evictions are unfortunately back to pre-pandemic levels, according to DataWorks. The Apartment Association and the eviction diversion programs talked on the causes of evictions. Not surprisingly, non-payment of rent is far and away the most common cause. This can mean as little as a single month. And the Apartment Association made a point to clarify that most evictions are a matter of $1,000 or less. The eviction process is usually very quick. The trial is often under 15 minutes. 90% to 95% of tenants are unrepresented, and almost all judgments are default judgments as the tenants don't show up to court. The eviction diversion program works to try and prevent eviction judgments and to avoid filings in the first place. They keep an attorney and a paralegal onsite at court to provide counsel to tenants facing eviction. And eviction diversion raises defenses, finds facts, and sometimes just buys tenants enough time to find another place to stay. So the eviction diversion program and the Apartment Association both had similar recommendations for minimizing evictions in Durham. Since most evictions, as I said, occur for $1,000 or less in unpaid rents, a little bit of emergency rental assistance can go a long way in helping these tenants keep their homes. Durham did have an emergency rental assistance fund for this earlier in the pandemic, but funds were exhausted in 2022. And now there are only a few scattered means of assistance through social services and other nonprofits. The second recommendation is to increase funding for Legal Aid, the legal wing of the eviction diversion program. According to Legal Aid, each lawyer was paid at a rate of about $60,000 per year and provided representation for 120 households each year. Legal Aid says their attorneys have historically assisted 85 of those families in keeping their home and allowed them to stay there, which at about 500 per family served seems to be a very cost-effective way of preventing these people from entering our homelessness continuum of care.
All right. And that brings us to our last topic, homelessness. Like with income levels, HUD has some specific categories here, which you can see below. The Continuum of Care is a network which works to prevent homelessness and to care for those who are experiencing homelessness. The presentation by Colin Davis went into some detail on how roles and funding are distributed in Durham's Continuum of Care. But broadly, it provides a few types of services. The front door is Entry Point, formerly called Coordinated Entry. That's where everybody whose entering system comes in. Street Outreach is a program to help connect those who need services with Entry Point. Like we said, a goal of the Continuum of Care is to avoid instances of homelessness in the first place. That's what diversion is about. Things like connecting people with nearby family or friends who can let them stay until they're back on their feet. Emergency shelters are temporary and only for the literally homeless category from HUD. There is some permanent supporting, sorry, permanent supportive housing available, but it's only for those who are both chronically homeless and who have a disabling condition. Otherwise, the Rapid Re-Housing Program provides temporary financial support to help households move from homelessness to a stable housing situation. There are, of course, a number of challenges facing the Continuum of Care. Some of them are going to sound familiar. Some of them are more unique to homelessness. The first one is just limited capacity and funding. There are a lot of variables in how long it can take for somebody to find permanent housing. And a big one is how crowded the system is. From 2017 to 2021, the time it took to find permanent housing grew by six months. And part of that, like we saw with the DHA, is how hard it is to find fair-lent placement. The harder it is for somebody to find a permanent home, the longer they stay in a shelter and the less room there is for others who need that. Homelessness is also impacted by mental health conditions, substance abuse, and mistrust of the system. Colin Davis pointed out that, as it stands, the homeless system is really a separate entity from the public health system, even though the two of them are very closely tied, which leads us to our last challenge, that the data and support networks are fractured. Durham's Continuum of Care collects some data on what services it provides. But partly for privacy reasons, it doesn't really talk with other city systems. And since people experiencing homelessness have, almost by definition, slipped through some sort of official cracks, they can be underaccounted or misrepresented in official data, which can lead to a lot of work for caseworkers and ultimately make it more difficult for people to get the assistance that they need.
So just some final thoughts. Unfortunately, the housing crisis is very complicated. With over 11 hours of presentations, there was a lot of data and good points that we just couldn't get to today. I hope we have made them all available within the omnibus for the public to look at. But housing is an issue with many different stakeholders and priorities. It's simultaneously subject to broad economic trends, but it's also personal to the individual. And it's the case that a lot of times, those can frequently butt heads and make life difficult for us all. But despite the difficulty and complexity, we do want to thank the council for making this priority over the past couple of years. We really appreciate all the work you've put in, and we're hopeful for progress as you begin to implement solutions based on these presentations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation and the time it's taken you to go through the 11 hours of presentations. I did want to just first say that I spoke with former Mayor Elaine O'Neill last night, or yesterday, and she did share that she wanted to say she would not be here, but she was definitely going to be watching. And she wanted me to clearly state that she was very proud of you both. And she appreciated you going through all of that data and collecting, compiling it for us.
Of course. Happy to do it.
And I'm turning to my colleagues for questions, if there are any. I see Councilmember Cook.
Awesome. An excellent job, y'all. I thought that was... I know y'all had a lot to tackle, and I thought that was really well done. I had a quick question about the investing in affordable housing preservation. And you had talked about the loan fund that was exhausted in 2022. Could you tell me a little bit more about what that fund was serving and where the money was coming from? And then, kind of subsequently, with the exhaustion, how that occurred?
So I would probably point back to the presentation from the Triangle Apartment Association. I believe that presentation talked more about that particular fund, where it went, and where it could go in the future.
Not a manager.
Thank you for the opportunity. There was a loan fund for a development loan fund that was made available in partnership with SelfHelp. And that is the fund that is being referred to as having been exhausted. So there were multiple partners. I believe the total loan fund was about $10 million in total, with the city having a contribution to that. So local developers, nonprofit developers, were able to access those loan funds in order to do their developments at prices that allowed the projects to be affordable. It really is expected to be a revolving-type loan fund, but it takes time for the developers to be able to repay based upon the conditions. We do have... I think there is some funding still left in Forever Home Durham to help begin to replenish that loan fund, along with the other partners.
Just a couple of comments. Yeah. Want to echo Councilmember Cook's comments. You summarized a lot of information in a short presentation, so thanks for doing all that. I do feel like, I have to admit, would appreciate comments from Councilwoman Freeman. I feel like we're just kind of stepping in. This has been a long conversation the last couple of years, right? So we're just, you know, at least Councilwoman Cook and I are just stepping into this. There's a lot of recommendations in here. So I'm kind of wondering, what was the plan for all those recommendations? Is that already being acted on? Or where do we... Because there's a lot there.
And I think that's up to the council to either prioritize or figure out what items or which recommendations we want to move forward or look more deeply into. And so it'll be a matter of us making that decision. I think all of this information is for us in the public, because I don't think it all sits in the city to manage as well. And so I think it's a partnership. I'm hoping that the Subcommittee on Housing Committee's meetings will continue, and that will be a good space to kind of continue this dialogue with all the resources around the omnibus available to anyone who serves on it.
Thanks.
I would also add, like, ask Councilmember Caviaro. She's been here almost as long as I have. Maybe a month shy.
Yeah, thank you. I have actually asked the mayor, because one of the recommendations is to kind of reconvene a larger, broader housing group with both, you know, people who have been historically involved in affordable housing, but also including people who are doing transit and land use to be more comprehensive. And so that is something that I have asked him if I could lead. And so we'll be providing updates in the next month or so around... Been having conversations with Russell Pierce from Housing for New Hope. I think Councilmember Freeman was at our last joint city-county meeting, where we were also talking about the Continuum of Care and some of the gaps within our homelessness work. And so we all know that this is broader. The idea of affordable housing, there's been conversations around workforce development housing, including the county and the schools in those conversations. So to Councilmember Freeman's point, it's going to be bigger than just the city. It kind of has to be. And look forward to providing feedback to council.
Sorry, and just one last comment. I do want to, as the council's representative to the Durham Housing Authority Board, I did want to say, for the record, I think the numbers may be... I think 1 in 20 residents in Durham lives in public housing in Durham. This is an important source of housing here. The comments in the presentation suggested failed model, bad reputation. I think that, from my perspective, there's no reason public housing can't work. It works around the world. I think we just have not invested in public housing in this country. Our federal government has really abdicated their responsibility for that, but I think as a model, there's no reason public housing can't work.
And I think to the tune of $76 billion, when you say underfunded, it does kind of hurt itself, so I understand. Councilmember Caballero.
Yeah, just to Councilmember Russ's point, thank you for bringing that up. A lot of folks come to us in Myla City, definitely has a critical role to play. So many of these things are, we could put the whole city budget, which was last year, $610 million last year, we could put all of that money, every cent, into affordable housing or into housing, and would not cover what we need. And so this is a time where I, you know, ask residents, remember, elections matter, not just at the local level, but at your state. There's plenty of states that have gotten in the game around affordable housing in a much more aggressive way than North Carolina has, and maybe why historically in North Carolina, it has been maybe urban centers in the last 10 years that have really struggled. Those struggles are being felt in rural communities and smaller communities as well, as we see an influx of residents. North Carolina was the third fastest-growing state last year and the year before, and that growth is not going anywhere. And so putting pressure on our folks at the General Assembly to really be a partner with us, local government folks on housing, because we all know it's, housing underpins so many other things in people's lives. Thank you.
And I would be remiss if I didn't add that I think that that's where the work has to happen, is more so at the state level, and then pushing around not just the rent level, but the actual tenant's rights. So there's a lot of work there. There's a lot to be done. And so again, if any other questions before I let these gentlemen depart? Thank you. I really appreciate you being here today and a great presentation. This information will be available on the city's website, and I am working with the clerk to make sure that the links to all of the meetings, so that you can see them, you can review them. I know you weren't here, but that information is stored, so thank you.
Thank you.